Good morning. Welcome to the Carroll County Commissioners Open Session for Thursday, April 3rd. And as we prefer to do, we'll start with a Pledge Allegiance and a Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. Really not much to say this morning. I just want to congratulate the Winfield Volunteer Fire Company on their 60th Anniversary of Celebrations over the weekend. Both the auxiliary and the fire station itself, Winfield was established at a time when there wasn't a whole lot in that area. And since that time, they're one of the busiest stations in the county, responding to a lot of calls in Frederick County as well. And there has been some information coming out lately in the press about our Department of Fire and EMS and some of the amazing innovations they're partaking under the leadership of Chief Robinson and Chief Supko and Dr. Stephanie Kemp. It's truly amazing what is happening, whether it's providing whole blood, providing the ability to do scans on people who may be experiencing strokes and figure out how to best to save them, faster transport, faster response times. Truly amazing. You know, eighty percent of the calls that are fire and EMS and volunteers respond to in the county are EMS calls. The other twenty percent are fires and accidents and things of that nature. So it's truly amazing what's going on. This board is proud to be a part of it. And I want to congratulate again, Winfield, everybody in Winfield, the whole community there, and all of the volunteers and our fire, Department of Fire and EMS for all the work that they're doing. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things this morning, but I'll try to be brief. First, wanted to mention that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So this month, we're honoring the, honoring the strength, resilience, and courage of survivors while raising awareness and working together for future, a future free of sexual violence. Wanted to mention that as that's very significant, not only in our community, but nationally as well. Secondly, I wanted to mention that we now have, as of today, a 2025 digital launch of Carroll News, which is a new online news site that is being created for local news, which is something I think we've all been missing for some time. A lot of it has unfortunately changed over time. Carroll County at one point had a significant number of newspapers back in the day. The Times started 1911. The pilot, which was in Union Bridge, started 1913. We had the Democratic Advocate that began in 1865. So we now have local digital news. So I think this is going to be a huge benefit to the community, and hopefully we all get to utilize that for more local news. Saturday was the anniversary, it was the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, which was to remember and honor and thank our nation's Vietnam veterans for their service and sacrifice. Also marked the 52nd anniversary of the day that the last U.S. Combat Troops left Vietnam. I want to thank all the Vietnam veterans for their service and truly appreciate everything that they've done for us. Also on Saturday, I was in attendance at Exploration Commons. We had an event there, that is myself with Aubrey Paris on my left, who is holding the John Wilkes Booth Diary from the National Treasure sequel. I'm holding the burnt page. And her colleague Emily Black, the other co-author of the book National Treasure Hunt, which they do a book and a podcast. She's holding one of the statues from the first film. So we had a number of props. They came in and did a talk about their book and their podcast. And then two of our county employees that have a podcast of their own had the opportunity to interview them. And I think that'll be coming out shortly. So it was a very nicely attended event, and that tied into the 250th celebration that we're leading up to in both Carroll County and nationally. As we all know, this past week was also opening day with the Orioles. Be remiss not to at least show something relating to the Orioles. This is a 1896 champion lapel stud that was given out to team members. And as we all are Orioles fans, we celebrate and appreciate them having an opening day. Also, for those in the community, Camp Cops is now open for registration. You can go ahead, Chris. So that opened yesterday. So great opportunity to get kids interacting with law enforcement and as always, appreciate law enforcement's involvement with kids in our community. And I have to tell a really quick story. I had a dear friend years ago, her son lived in Westminster, and police were out doing traffic for the Fourth of July event. And he had to rush in the house and get his badge and everything because he wants to be a police officer when he grows up. So I know some places law enforcement isn't as treated and respected as well as they should be these days, but clearly in Carroll County, it still is. So just wanted to mention Camp Cops. And also wanted to mention briefly the Blueprint Town Hall last night that myself, Commissioner Rothstein, and Commissioner Kyler attended. It was a good crowd. It was a little smaller, I think, than the previous ones, but a lot of good information that was shared. I think we all have faith that we're going to find some resolution moving forward on this and truly appreciate everything that both us, our delegation has done, and Carroll County Public Schools and everybody else involved. And have one other thing I wanted to bring up this morning, Chris. We have a Carroll County resident who has reached out to the owners of the Orioles. She had an interesting idea. She would love to see a female Oriole bird mascot as well with the male mascot. She asked, well, why don't we have one? Apparently the, at Fenway, they have a female and a male mascot. So you know, we have Mickey and Minnie. Maybe we need a female Oriole. And she's also mentioned this and presented this idea at the Carroll County 4-H in February, in which she received a blue ribbon for her speech. So maybe we'll see Carroll County having some involvement with the Orioles. I don't know. And that's all for me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vigliotti.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I just have three things to share today, and I'll try to be quick along with my colleagues. As our opposition to the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project continues, the company that's responsible for the power lines is attempting to alter the schedule for procedure with the Maryland Public Service Commission to suit their own construction schedule for the power lines. And they're also trying to seek to limit who can intervene in the case against the power lines. These are unsurprising tactics, but fortunately, the PSC is encouraging citizens to write in on these topics, specifically, as mentioned, as I mentioned last week, the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Power Plant Research Program's conclusion that the application for the power lines is incomplete. And secondly, the plans regarding the procedural schedule. All the comments are due by April 11th. And it's been brought to my attention that Stop MPRP Incorporated will be sharing some of those guidelines on how to do this and sharing suggestions on what to include in any written comments, and that all of this should be available through them tomorrow, April 4th. And I'm sure as we get more information ourselves, we'll be putting that up on our website. Secondly, with the spring well underway at this point, a lot of our towns and cities are preparing events and possibilities for community participation that are well worth being a part of. The end of this month has been shared with me, New Windsor will be hosting their annual beautification day, where the town is clean and flowers and gardens are planted. Tawny Town will be having an Easter egg hunt in a couple of weeks, and they'll also be having their own park cleanup and earth day. And I will share more details on these as we get closer to them. And last but not least, it is election season for our municipalities as well. I know that a number of mayor and council seats will be up for decision throughout the county next month. And I very much encourage you, if you have, if you live in the limits of a town or a city, to learn about candidates, where they stand, and when you can vote. And that's all for me this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein.
Okay. A couple of things. As shared by Commissioner Gordon, the town hall last night, the whole Board of Education was in attendance, along with three of us. You know, it was discussed, and Superintendent did a great job sharing the funding decisions that are being made. One, dealing with operational dollars. The other dealing with compliance with what's called the blueprint or the state mandates. We are fortunate that we have moved forward to support them with the operational dollars, you know, and we still have a ways to go with our budget deliberation, but it's a step in the right direction. So with that, you know, out there, it was a much less hostile town hall than the one before, and probably cut in half. There was much more comments of gratitude than there were of finger pointing. So, and it was from the same people. So it was pretty interesting. But The takeaway, the real takeaway to me is the partnership, candidness that we have with our superintendent, the Board of Education, amongst us here on the Board of County Commissioners and the delegation. We're all talking with each other, focused on what is best for our children here in Carroll County. And, you know, trying to keep our eye on the ball. I'm part of what's called the Fort Meade Alliance Foundation. When I was in command at Fort Meade, we started a resiliency program, and we've raised enough funds to create that from basically the ground up. And it's appropriate, and I'm really looking forward to listening to our priority Carroll, dealing with Child Abuse Prevention Month, because a large part of the resiliency had to do with the different, I use the word distractors from service members' mission. And unfortunate distractors had to deal with abuse in many different ways. So how do we mitigate that, minimize that, and create a healthy community? That was the focus of that. And we're continuing to do that for the Fort Meade community, which includes Carroll County as part of that community. So I am really looking forward to hearing from all the different services that we provide here in our Carroll County community. The last thing, Carroll County, as we know, is not an island amongst others in Maryland. So in participation, and our delegation doing a very good job, Sine Die, or the last day of the legislative season is Monday. The budget was approved going through both the House of Delegates and the State Senate. We did not get nearly everything we wanted from a Carroll County community's perspective. That's not in any way because of lack of interest from you or the delegation. They worked hard to amend what was pretty difficult budget at the state, and the taxes and fees that are going to be coming our way. It's going to make it difficult, you know, to keep ourselves strong, especially, I believe, with small businesses. So more to follow on that as, you know, we start defining what the impact of the legislation and the taxes are going to be taking place after Monday. And, but you really appreciate Commissioner Kyler being down there at the legislative session. You know, on Wednesdays, I think we make a difference. And I think we make a difference having that relationship with the Maryland Association Counties. And in a few minutes, listening to Ms. Meister as our liaison as well, keeping us aware and abreast of different legislative issues and actions that need to take place. So I will leave it, that's my priority for this week. Leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. On Saturday night, Rhonda and I went to New Windsor Lions at the New Windsor Far Hall, which has a great, I don't know how many people have been in there. They have a great room in the lower level. And you walk right in from the parking lot. It's a nice room, New Windsor Lions. And probably everybody in the room but me would know this, but we have extensive lions in Carroll County. And they give away a loan, medical equipment, beds, and all that stuff. They do a great thing. But I did not realize that nationwide, the lions are the largest group that does that. And I didn't know that. Once About Nothing was this week. We didn't get to go there. And, but it's still a great event. And they do that once a month, and it's on main And it's on Main Street in Westminster, and it's Lunch About Nothing. And everybody kind of talks to each other. It's a good event. And I apologize, I didn't make it there. On a family note, and no age discrimination, please. My middle son turned 48 yesterday, and he's in Denver, but we got to wish him happy birthday. And my oldest turns 50 this year, and I don't even remember 50.
I gotta say something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Winter's Mill Wrestling on Friday night had their banquet, and they filled the cafeteria. I don't even know if they call that anymore, the school's cafeteria, but they filled it with boys and girls teams and their success over the year. That was very nice. And then, again, a lot of people may be aware of this, Manchester Valley Girls Lacrosse. I think they lost in the state finals last year, but this year, they are nationally ranked and on a lot of people's radar screen nationwide for girls lacrosse. And Carroll County's had some great, successful teams over the years in various sports. And I just think it's neat. I wanted to mention that. Mako's been fighting solar, and the solar bill probably two months before the session. And they recognize that something's going to be passed, and they're all about local control. And I think, hopefully, they've modified the bill enough, it's going to pass. But I think we will retain some rights at least. And I appreciate Mako. Commissioner Rothstein mentioned them on Wednesday. They're doing, everybody in Annapolis is doing an event on Monday. And the delegates and Senate there will probably be still fighting at 11:59 that night. And it's, they do a lot of work down there and appreciate how we work together. Blueprint Town Hall, a couple of people mentioned that. To me, the most important thing is the Maryland Accountability and Implamation Board is the one that CCPS applied to for a waiver. There is a list of contact people. Rachel Heiss is the executive director. And then it's, I don't know, eight or 10 of them. But the superintendent did ask everyone last night, please, please try to send them emails and say, please grant the waiver. Again, that's a case, which I understand. We see it in all things. I don't think some of the parents had heard the word blueprint before this year. And now it will be, in some ways, no matter what we do, affecting their kids in school. The superintendent, the assistant superintendents, they've been fighting this for probably three, four years before that was called blueprint. It was called the current commission. And they've been fighting this, and our superintendent predicted that this year would happen. And Carroll County's different. We went through enrollment decline that really hurt us. And I think everybody in the room will agree with me. I don't feel this way, but the state and the State Department of Education considers Carroll County too wealthy to get too many benefits. And I don't know that I feel like we're wealthy, but we are blessed. And I've argued, contrary to some of the stuff that you heard at Century and the earlier town halls where people just didn't understand, we are actually punished because the commissioners have funded the schools too well. And that's a shame. You know, I think we have a great school system, great test scores. I think they work great with special needs kids. Some of the things that Blueprint talks about, they're already doing. But Blueprint is more how much money are you throwing at stuff than what kind of results are you getting? And I think Rachel Heiss and the AIB are understanding that, and they're looking to do a waiver. And I think the waiver is the start of maybe changing Blueprint. But I personally don't see that happening until after the election, which is a shame, but that's politics, the way they work. So again, if anybody needs the emails to talk to AIB, please holler. And I'll end it there today. And now we have a proclamation in a very crowded room of friendly, happy faces. It's nice. So does somebody want to come up and fill the three seats and talk to us after Commissioner Gordon talks to us?
Or maybe rotate them around or something?
Yeah, yeah. And then we'll tell the people in the back room, you probably need a wide lens on your camera to get this picture. You want them to start or you to start?
I can start. That's fine. So National Child Abuse Prevention Month is April 2025. Whereas April is designated as National Child Abuse Awareness Month, highlighting the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. And throughout April, Carroll County will go blue for kids to raise awareness of child abuse prevention and support for children who have suffered abuse. This initiative involves wearing blue on Fridays and planting pinwheel gardens throughout the county. Pinwheels symbolize the safe, carefree childhood we wish for every child in our community. Each pinwheel represents not only child abuse prevention, but also the ideal childhood we want for every child in Carroll County. And children are the future, are the future parents, employees, and leaders of our community. It is our responsibility as adults to encourage and nurture their growth and development. And effective child abuse prevention and support efforts for children, for child victims and their families succeed through partnerships among local law enforcement, human service agencies, legal experts, healthcare providers, mental health professionals, and other organizations dedicated to improving the lives of children. And Maryland has enacted laws to protect the rights of child victims and provide essential services. Our public and private sectors must continue to work together to maintain and improve programs and legislation that benefits these vulnerable young individuals. And Carroll County calls on all citizens, community agencies, medical and mental health providers, elected officials, schools, and businesses to collaborate with the Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center. Together, we can support child victims of maltreatment prevention, child abuse, and strengthen our community. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, to hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens to wear blue on Fridays in April and dedicate ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families adopted this third day of April 2025, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here again today. We're just going to introduce ourselves. I'm Lisa Donovan. I'm the program coordinator at the Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center.
Corporal Corey Vandergrift with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office assigned over at our Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jamie Martin. I am the supervisor for the Child Protective Services Unit that works closely with the Advocacy and Investigation Center. I supervise the forensic interviewers and the investigators and the continuing worker that carries all the sexual abuse and serious physical abuse cases.
So we are here today to talk about a subject that's close to our hearts, the well-being and protection of our most vulnerable citizens, our children. As a community, we have a responsibility to ensure that children grow up in a safe, nurturing, and supportive environment. Since its inception in 1991, the Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center has been a place where children who have been victims of abuse or neglect receive specialized coordinated services. The center is accredited through the National Children's Alliance, which means that our center meets the highest standards for practice in child advocacy across the country. But the true benefit of the center extends far beyond the walls. It strengthens the community as a whole. One of the most critical benefits of the center is the holistic support it offers to children and their families. The center brings together a team of professionals from various fields referred to as our multidisciplinary team. That includes law enforcement, child protective services, advocates, medical and mental health professionals, and the prosecutor's office. We all collaborate to meet the best needs of the child. By having these services available, children and their families don't have to endure multiple interviews, visits to different agencies, or the trauma of having to share their experience time and time again. To minimize the trauma of an investigation, the center is designed to be a child-friendly, neutral environment, ensuring that kids feel safe and supported. The forensic interviews conducted are specifically designed to gather information in a way that's open-ended and developmentally appropriate, which leads to more accurate disclosures. This in turn strengthens the justice system and holds perpetrators accountable for their actions, ensuring that other children in the community are safe. Having the center fosters trust between families and services designed to protect them. When the community sees that there is a dedicated professional and a compassionate system in place to care for children who've been abused, it reassures the public that there are avenues for justice, healing, and support. This trust is crucial as it encourages more people to come forward if they suspect a child is being abused. And it empowers families to seek help without fear of judgment. More than a physical space that Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center embodies our community's continued commitment to protecting its children, offering hope for healing, and fostering a safer future for all.
Good morning again. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. The Carroll County Sheriff's Office is committed to prioritizing the safety, well-being, and recovery of abused children in Carroll County. The Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center, located at 1232 Tech Court, Westminster, Maryland 2157, is one of only three child advocacy centers in Maryland with a dedicated law enforcement unit focused on protection. To give you a better understanding of the cases we see, here are a few statistics from 2024. 381 children were seen at Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center. Forty-eight percent of our investigations involve sexual abuse or sexual assault. Forty-one percent of that was ICAC, which is Internet Crimes Against Children, so child pornography, sexual solicitation of a minor, those crimes coming from the internet. Ten percent, physical child abuse, and one percent, child neglect. Ninety percent of the alleged offenders were known to the victim. Sixty-two percent of the cases, the children were aged between 11 and 17 years old. Twenty-five percent of the cases, the children were aged 10. And 13% of the cases, the children were under six years old. We at the Carroll County Advocacy and Investigation Center recognize that when a child experiences abuse, the way we as first responders respond can shape their healing process and their trust in the justice system. This is why trauma-informed police investigations are essential in child abuse cases. Trauma-informed investigations are crucial when dealing with child abuse, either sexual or physical, because they prioritize the well-being and safety of the child while seeking justice. Children who experience abuse often carry deep emotional and psychological scars. And how they are questioned and supported during an investigation can significantly impact their recovery. A trauma-informed approach ensures that investigators understand the child's emotional state, use age-appropriate language, and create a safe, supportive environment where the child feels comfortable sharing these experiences. We don't keep statistics on disclosure. Our focus is on creating a safe environment for children to speak freely about their experience and what brought them to seque. We're here for the truth. By minimizing re-traumatization, this approach helps preserve the integrity of the investigation and increases the likelihood of obtaining accurate and reliable information. It also fosters trust between the child and investigators, which is essential for effective communication and building a foundation for healing. Above all, trauma-informed investigations recognize that the child's emotional and psychological needs are just as important as the legal process, ensuring both justice and compassion are at the forefront of every case. Every child deserves justice, but justice should not come at the cost of further harm. We encourage and support survivors on their path to healing while holding perpetrators accountable. Some people might ask, why were pinwheels planted at the corner of Center Street and Court Street? And I know you just mentioned it, Commissioner Gordon, but I wanted to reiterate, pinwheels are a symbol of playfulness, joy, childhood, and positive cycles of love and support. And they are also the national symbol for child abuse prevention, representing the hope for safe and healthy childhoods for all children. Lastly, I just wanted to take the time to thank our multidisciplinary team comprised of members from the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, Westminster Police Department, Maryland State Police, Spring Board Community Services, Child Protective Services, Care Healing Center, Forensic Nurses at Carroll Hospital Center, Carroll County State's Attorney's Office, Special Victims Unit, for all the work to support the safety and well-being of children in Carroll County. And we are also blessed in Carroll County to have various other nonprofit agencies or resources available to residents of our community for their healing and mental well-being. Thank you for your time.
And good morning again, Commissioners. Also, I second Corey in thanking all of our community partners and our multidisciplinary team that participate in our bi-weekly staffings to determine, you know, next steps in all of our investigations and our cases. It's really important. We have had a lot of restructuring going on, and we've worked really hard to sort of, you know, restructure our CAC. And Lisa at the home, I feel like we're really doing a good job of, you know, figuring all of that out. So today, as we are here for the Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, I just want to talk a little bit about community awareness, which is the cornerstone of child abuse prevention. Every individual, whether a parent, teacher, neighbor, or local leader, has a role to play in protecting our children. When a community is informed about the signs of abuse and understands how to respond, we create an environment where children are more likely to be seen, heard, and supported. The importance of community awareness lies in breaking the silence and stigma that often surrounds child abuse. Too often, abuse happens behind closed doors, and it's easy for signs to be overlooked or ignored. By educating ourselves and others about the warning signs such as sudden behavioral changes, physical marks, or withdrawal, we empower everyone to act when something seems wrong. Moreover, awareness goes beyond just recognizing signs of abuse. It includes knowing how to report concerns safely and understanding how to support both the child and the family during difficult times. A community that works together to prevent abuse fosters a sense of shared responsibility and builds a network of care and protection around our children. Ultimately, by raising our collective awareness, we strengthen our ability to prevent child abuse, intervene early, and we ensure that all our children can grow up in a safe, supportive environment. We all have a part to play in keeping our children safe, and I believe it starts with awareness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And some of the Commissioners in Party Carroll mentioned the transmission line, the school system. And I try to, I try to work in every meeting. I love Carroll County, and you look out across this room, it reinforces why. This stuff touches everyone, and so the people that say it doesn't are either confused or not telling the truth. What I've seen, some of the addiction, some of the recovery people, their problems started when they were seven or eight years old and molested and had no outlet to tell people. Or in one case, the parents took the side of the adults, not the kids. So you guys do a great service. And like I say, that there, people aren't used to Carroll County because we work together. So, and you guys have mentioned most, but we have the Sheriff's Office, State's Attorney's Office, Department of Social Services, Spring Board, Care Healing, Health Department, Carroll Hospital Center, Westminster City Police, the Commissioners and staff. And who did I skip? There must be, there's probably another group here. Did I skip anybody? So thank you all for their involvement in this, and it's amazing that we can all work together.
Yes, sir.
I could not even begin to imagine what all of you have to see and deal with on a daily basis. But I am grateful to God for you and grateful to God for the work that you do. If somebody needs help or if they want more information, where do they go? Who do they get in touch with?
They can call the department, 410-386-3434. That is the main reporting line. So if you're looking for like a crisis, that would be like Care Healing. But if they need to report something as far as like
Suspected abuse.
suspected abuse, then you would call the department at that number. And we have cards, but you can find that online too.
Thank you very much. Seriously, God bless all of you.
Thank you.
So I mean, if they're scared and hyped up, they can also dial 911.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, that's, you know, it's I mean, that's, you know, it's hard to remember ten-digit numbers when, you know, 911.
If somebody's looking for immediate assistance, yes.
It will get the right direction.
That is correct.
Now, again, I appreciate all the work we're doing in the community. It's never gonna go away. It's unfortunate, so we minimize, we mitigate, we do everything we can with the right tools, you know, and, you know, it's, I always believe in tell two friends to tell two friends and keep going that way. I mean, are you short, and I'm looking collectively, volunteers? Like where are the shortages that are needed? I mean, there's lots of different nonprofits, you're all working together, you have your, you know, collective meetings and, you know, but at some point, you talk about resources, you know. So where are we short resources? And don't just save money.
I think the biggest thing that we can do is raise awareness. It is helping people understand that it happens in our community, in all demographics, in all socioeconomic areas, and to remove the stigma of talking about it. People are afraid to talk about it and acknowledge it, and so being open and communicating to our children about body safety and things like that. And so those are the things that are really critical to eradicating child abuse. Carroll County has a wonderful resource, amount of resources available, and obviously, that's always helpful, and we can always use more of that and more money. But really, creating that awareness is the thing that is really gonna benefit the citizens of the community.
So creating that awareness, a strategic marketing campaign, you know, and keeping it fresh, so it's not, you know, every five years, we do a marketing campaign, and, you know, it just loses its oomph. It's difficult to do. It is costly. It is resource-driven to do these things quarterly, but I think we can advocate for that, you know. We can advocate for a lot of things, you know. Reach out, reach out to me and my colleagues where you want us to. And, you know, let's try to work this together, because it's a full room of very selfless and dedicated folks. But there's a hurting community that's, you know, again, it's always gonna be there, so whatever, you know. Keep the doors open, so, not just on the one day a week.
And again, I think you all have a flyer in front of you, but we do have our annual walk at Dutter's Park on the 24th. It's a Thursday. It is from two, or is it two, no, one to 2:30. One to 2:30. I couldn't remember what time. We changed the time. We don't want to hit the buses when they let out of school. So, one to 2:30, if you all can make it, that would be great. It's our supporting awareness piece, so.
And also too, just for the record, Care Healing Center is doing a wing-eating contest Friday at the Green Turtle. You can go on their social media websites for those involved, or you can reach out to Care, but the Green Turtle should be hopping on Friday with a bunch of people eating wings to support child abuse.
And I forgot to mention, when I listed the people, and maybe not here, it's Carroll County Public Schools, and you guys put the word out there, and I've got to say, I was an average parent. I don't know that I was good or bad, but my oldest son, probably back in the eighties, came home from elementary school one day, and he goes, "I just want to let you know, if you do something stupid to me, I know the number to call."
He knew 3434?
Commissioner Gordon.
Just echoing my colleague's comments, just truly want to thank everybody that's here. Obviously, there's a lot of people in the community that are not here today, but it truly does take us all, and it's something we do collectively very well. Would it be possible to get a copy of this packet emailed to us by chance? I appreciate that. You had mentioned, I think it was three hundred and eighty-one kids were seen this, is that this past year?
2024, sir.
Are we seeing an increase? Are we seeing a decrease? What are we seeing in that regard?
We're seeing a steady increase, especially with the percentage of investigations involving like Internet crimes against children. And then those, as awareness, like my program coordinator, Lisa Donovan, said, as that awareness and education comes forward, the more and more of these types of crimes are gonna be reported to us. So we can only go based off the crimes that are actually being reported, or incidents that are being reported. But we are seeing an increase, as you know, with those cell phones, and every one of your pockets is a small computer. We're giving them to elementary-age kids and middle-school kids that their brains haven't fully developed, et cetera. So, and they're given that phone with a camera on it. So we're trying to do the education piece, and as that continues with all those applications that you can put on your phone, we're seeing an increase in investigations as well, so.
That was my suspicion, but I want to get it from you firsthand. But I have to wonder, and I don't have an answer for this, but you make a very good point. You know, we all carry these things around, and it's complete access to everything. And, you know, the youth don't really understand, whether it be younger kids, high school age, whatever, middle school, whatever, that what that, you know, can put them in harms way, be it being out there on the internet, being at Sheridan Schools. I just wonder if there isn't a better way. You mentioned marketing. Is there some way to maybe market and explain that? Because, you know, something seems harmless in some fashion, but we all know, and I'm not saying it specifically to this, but anything with the phone, they think, oh, it's just a phone. But it's not. Like you said, it's a computer, and it's out there.
Yes, we work hand-in-hand with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, so that's a really great resource for information. There's also, as of right now, there's some programs in the schools that are doing some internet safety as well. And then when we go out on our knock and educates in our office, our ICAC investigator and myself or one of the other detectives will go out and knock and educate with these individuals that are self-producing and just try to reiterate the resources that are out there. The biggest thing I can say, since we're being televised, et cetera, and recorded, is I would try to educate all parents that are listening that when those phones are being charged tonight, to charge them in a common area of your house and not letting those phones go into the bedroom after hours, because you wouldn't leave your door unlocked, but what you're doing is you're unlocking that bedroom door and letting that phone be in there with your child after hours. And also too, there's no reason to have a cellphone in the bathroom with your juvenile. The cellphone can remain outside in a common area while they go use the restroom or go shower, et cetera. So those are my key points that I try to push towards the parents and individuals in our county with those kind of red flag areas.
I appreciate you mentioning those, because I think sometimes we become too comfortable with things, and we don't realize the ability that some of these products have, so.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Just a hearty thank you for your fierce advocacy of defending the most vulnerable people in our population. And they are people, they're just little people, and the tremendous amount of collaboration that occurs to make this work. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if we want to attempt to get a picture.
Yes, yes, yes.
Not gonna get everybody up here?
Yeah, we want everyone.
Don't we get everyone? Yeah. Come on up, come on up. The cameraman's back at the door, so crowd in and make sure, make sure he'll probably direct some of us.
Just move it.
He's waiting for the guy with the badge to get out of the way. You want Mr. Burke in the shot?
Thank you all.
So where's this come, with us?
With us.
Thank you guys for a great start to our meeting. Absent from the photo is the back row. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're, looks like we're ready for the legislative update. Morning.
Hello, Pam. How are you today?
Hey, Amy.
Is this Pam or Amy?
It's Amy.
I'll leave it up to you to decide. It's good to see you all today. Let's grab this presentation and get the party started. Okay. Can you see the slides?
Yes, yep.
All right, so we are in the home stretch here of the session. And today's update is gonna be, I think, a little bit shorter than usual, even though so much is going on, because a lot of it is self-explanatory in your slides. I'm gonna just scroll through a few of them. But touch on some key points of things that have happened this week that I want to bring to your attention. And then next week, we'll have the post-Sanidi legislative update, which will be pretty comprehensive and give you a big overview of the bills that we've been tracking here, and then some others, just to give you an idea of what's passed throughout the session. So, starting with the budget, as was shared earlier, it passed the Senate. It had over seventy amendments, and it closely aligned with the House version, but there were a few differences, primarily Transportation Section, which includes revenue from corporate tax combined reporting. And now it's in the Conference Committee, so that's where all the differences will get ironed out. But in both of these versions, from the House and the Senate, taxes and fee increases were included. I've listed a number of them here. Some of them, you know, I think we talked about last week, but just to quickly go over them, you can see the capital gains tax, cannabis tax, sports wagering, data and IT service tax, sales tax on metal coins and bullion over a thousand dollars, vending machines, and the list goes on. And, you know, this is where a lot of the debate was surrounded around the idea where they were saying we weren't raising taxes on everybody. As you can see, most people have some type of area on this list, if not many, that they're going to be impacted by. So it's going to be, you know, a big impact across the state at all levels and all localities from this perspective, whether it's a direct, you know, income tax or not. So one of the things worth mentioning also are the differences in the House and Senate versions. So I have some of them listed here. The vehicle excise tax amount was just slightly different between the House and the Senate. The rental vehicle excise tax was included in the House version but not the Senate. The House version also has a VEIP fee increase. Senate included an increased cap on the MVA cost recovery, as well as a new $5 per tire fee at purchase. The Senate eliminated a rental car registration fee discount. And the Senate budget plan also has triggers for changes with more federal updates. So if Medicaid funding or other things change, they already have stuff written into their plans.
Hey, Pam, can you go back?
Sure.
One more slide. I mean, I want this to resonate, you know, and this is not just, you know, you to us, but us to our community. Our delegation worked hard to amend, and there were many amendments that were put on the floor. And they were successful, maybe with one out of many, many, if any. But these are, these are gonna be very difficult numbers for our businesses in Carroll County. You know, three percent data and IT service tax is significant. You know, some of these fees, I mean, it's gonna hit home, not to everybody, but to someone. So, yeah, these are, these are some pretty difficult numbers to swallow. And we're still not done, you know, I mean, this is still, you know, there. So I just, you know, again, I appreciate what you're doing, and I just want to slow you down a little bit on this, because this is really what, you know, rubber hits the road for our community, so.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And I like hearing that, too.
No, you're right. And like, so much of the debate, when you listen to the hours and hours of conversation in both houses, is exactly what we're saying, you know. There's, it's not a lack of transparency, but it's where people start, I think, sometimes to question decisions and how they're made, because not everybody listens to the hours and hours of debate and all the amendments and understand how the budget gets passed. But like, you know, when you just look at the numbers or you hear like the headlines, you don't really see all of these little line items that add up to kind of what's gonna impact people on the ground. And these are where those impacts happen.
It's interesting to Commissioner Rothstein's point, and I agree. When we're looking at the internet tax and some of these other taxes, what we're looking at, but you come down here, and I hadn't even been aware of this one yet, but you look at the implementation of sales tax on precious metal coins and bullion over a thousand dollars. So I'm gonna assume that would be anything collectible-related coins as well, which this is something that's gonna be extraordinarily heavy on anyone that's not just dealing in just straight bullion or precious metals, but anything of the collectible value. So you're gonna see potentially a significant hit to those small businesses and individuals as well.
And Pam, could I ask, I know there was some discussion, I apologize if you haven't talked about this yet, about whether the shift of state pension costs for teachers, it was gonna be five million or 2.5 million, and where that was?
Oh, I believe that both houses left it at the governor's recommended amount, which was the fifty percent shift instead of the hundred percent shift.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah. And I'll make sure in next week's update, as much as I can gather, to give you an update on all the little nuances with the budget. Just given that it's now a Conference Committee, and some things are in the budget, or the Burfa, or the capital budget, you know, there's a lot of things to go through. And not everything's updated in a way that's easy to be certain about on the website, because you're weeding through the legislation. So I want to make sure, given that everything's moving quickly, that I give you accurate information. But I'm ninety-nine percent sure that one's accurate, and I think the theme is true for the ESTAT shift. I think the same, I think they concurred the Senate with the House. So those were two of the bigger ones that we talked about.
And the ESTAT was, what was it with the ESTAT?
It's now a ninety-ten shift to local governments from a lower percentage. That I can't, I keep escaping me what it was before, but it's just a heavier burden. from a lower percentage that I can't, I keep escaping me what it was before, but it's just a heavier burden on local governments.
Thank you very much.
Pretty sure it was fifty-fifty before.
It was fifty-fifty before?
Okay, thank you. I knew it was something, I wasn't sure if it was sixty, forty, fifty, fifty.
Yeah, it's changed several times over the years, but I think at the moment, I could be wrong.
Okay, well, moving on to some good news. Carroll County's bill for the criminal history records check has passed both versions, both houses unanimously. So that's before the governors, we've had hope as long as it's signed. It's looking good, and that's very exciting, so that's one big win. The bond bill also has passed the House and has gone to the governor, so that was also unanimous and really positive. Another big issue this week was all of the energy legislation. And there was a meeting yesterday with Mako that went over some of this. Just to go over some main points about this because it's a long, ongoing discussion. There have been a lot of amendments that had key wins for the counties. And now the counties can reject solar projects over five megawatts in Tier One and Two zones, which is a good positive change. And prevents solar from competing with affordable housing, commercial projects, and infrastructure expansion. There's also some limitations for solar development in agricultural priority preservation areas. So that previously, solar could be built in all PPA areas, which would threaten farmland. So now it's capped at five percent of the county's total PPA acreage. So after this point, counties can deny additional projects. As far as agricultural preservation easements and solar development, there was a little bit confusion over this in PPAs. So the final decision will depend on the language of each individual easement. And many older easements don't mention solar, but they still prohibit non-agricultural development, so that could exclude solar. And the PSC must now consider local zoning before approving projects. So that gives more weight to county zoning laws when reviewing large-scale solar projects, and there's stronger grounds to oppose projects by counties. So solar siting standards are now applying statewide. And additionally, the projects that are smaller than five megawatts can still be placed in Tier One and Two tier areas if they fall under community solar regulations rather than the larger-scale solar rules. But decommissioning bond rules need strengthening still, so there's still work to be done. Counties did push for stronger decommissioning bond requirements to ensure solar developments cover the full cost of removing panels at the end of their lifespan. And the industry agreed to remove salvage value from bond calculations, but this was not included in the Senate bill. So they're trying to get this in the House version still and working that through. There's still a lot of discussion about battery storage and regulation with local control. And it's not explicitly, battery storage is not explicitly regulated in the bill, but counties have been concerned about this. And there's already implementation by PSC for battery storage regulations. Additionally, House Bill 1035, you know, I'm sorry, I'm skipping over something. Okay, moving on. The counties can expand their PPAs also. And the General Assembly clarified this expansion will still count under the five percent solar cap, so that was important. And they can reduce their PPA size if desired. So overall, the amended bill is a major improvement over the original version because it restored some county control. And some large-scale projects can be blocked and you can enforce more local zoning authority. But there still are concerns with the battery storage regulations, ensuring some deadlines with the PPA, not excluding counties that need protection, and the decommission funding, as I just mentioned. There was some conversation by some counties yesterday at the meeting that, you know, they were gonna do what they needed to do and then face legal challenges. So this still is an issue that's gonna be up to Sunny Die, I bet, in dealing with everything, so I'll keep you posted. But it's continuing to evolve and Mako's been really on top of this and doing everything they can to mitigate any harm, so that's really good to know. As it relates to blueprint, this issue obviously continues to be talked about, as you know. The Senate gave final approval to its version of the blueprint for Maryland's future bill with a thirty-three to thirteen vote. And now there's a Conference Committee with the House. There was a debate in the midst of all this on transgender sports amendments that was brought up by Senator Reedy. The amendment was rejected, but I just thought I'd mention that in case you weren't aware that that discussion had taken place. And basically, it would have prohibited transgender females from participating in women's sports in schools, and it was integrated in this conversation. The main issue of collaborative time is something that keeps coming up, obviously, this year and has been the big point with this bill. So the Senate bill aligns with the governor's proposal on the per pupil funding and collaborative teacher time provisions. The House rejected cuts in the per pupil funding and a four-year pause on collaborative time, going for a one-year pause. Local school officials and states are facing the three billion dollar shortfall, as you know, which has led to all of these debates. So it's gonna be interesting to see what happens in the final days of session with all of this as they kind of come together in Conference Committee. But they'll come up with something because as they've said, the blueprint is sticking around. The local government accommodations hotel rental tax just moved a little bit, so that's here. You can just see on the charts above that it's had first reading, but I'm not sure if it'll go anywhere yet because we still don't have much time. The land use, regional housing, infrastructure gap bill, it was referred to Committee, I'm just showing you the ones that didn't stay exactly where they were from last week. Same with the wildlife protection crossings, that bill passed the House. So we'll see if that moves further. And then everything else in your packet is status quo from last week, so it just hasn't moved yet, doesn't mean it won't move. I anticipate now that they've passed the budget, the next week is just gonna be a lot of legislation flying and Conference Committees. So when I sit before you next week, I will be updating you on all of these bills and then anything else that I think may be interesting for you to know, even if it's just a statewide impact. And I'll provide you with a comprehensive report from the General Assembly of everything that's passed and failed for all the bills, so you can take a look and see where everything's at. So that is what I have for you today, but the final days of session should be really interesting. And if there's anything that's particularly concerning to you, let me know because we can still weigh in and send some letters. We just have to move quickly because everything is moving quickly right now. That's what I have today.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, as always.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay, talk to you soon.
Okay, we next have a public hearing for Piney Run Watershed Study and... Mr. Burke, do you have any rules for us or are we okay?
No, this is, uh... This is a public hearing to discuss a proposed plan for the Piney Run. Why are we required to have a public hearing on this?
I will certainly explain that.
Bail me out, would you?
I'll bail you out. I've got your back. Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So we're here to discuss a watershed study that the county has been working on for about five years now. It's a study that a consultant has been performing for us, AECOM, and it's funded by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. And one of the final steps in the watershed study is a public hearing, which is why we are here today. So I have a brief presentation that I'll be running through to give you some of the facts of what we determined in the watershed study. There is no action required from you today other than closing out the hearing. And then we will wrap up the process with NRCS and then move on to the next steps. So with that, I will go through the presentation. So just to give you some background, we're discussing Piney Run Reservoir, aerial photo shown here. The reservoir was completed in nineteen seventy-four and had three primary purposes. They were for flood control, water supply, and recreation. And you can see the reservoir is oriented basically north-south, and at the southern end, down at the, down here, is where the dam is that holds the water back as part of the reservoir. So we're here discussing Piney Run Dam. The Piney Run Dam is the largest dam that the county owns. It's seventy-three feet tall and six hundred feet long. The reservoir behind it is about two hundred and ninety acres. Right at the dam location is where it's deepest, so it's about fifty-four feet deep there. And we hold about 1.7 billion gallons of water in the reservoir. So just for familiarity on some technical terms, when we discuss the dam, we often discuss it in terms of an embankment, and the picture in the upper left is the embankment with the reservoir on the left and the down slope on the right. The, as I mentioned, the reservoir was originally constructed in part for water supply. It's never been implemented for water supply, but when it was constructed, the structure that's in the lower right here, if you've ever been out to the dam, there's a structure and there's a little shed that's sitting on top of it. That's for the water supply system, a future water supply system. There are valves in that shed that will open up openings at different depths. And then there is a pipe that runs through the dam that currently discharges into the stream. The idea being that at some point in the future, if we were to ever implement for water supply, that would be one option where a raw water line could be hooked up to that and take water to a treatment plant to then be used. Control of the water level in the reservoir is from the principal spillway, which is located here and is in the picture in the upper right. So essentially, there are some grates that are open on the sides here, and that controls the water level in the reservoir. So normal water flow as from the streams comes into the reservoir, it then flows through that and goes through a pipe that runs through the dam and discharges into Piney Run. So the principal spillway that has a certain amount of capacity, a certain amount of water that it can let out of the reservoir. There, we have what is called an auxiliary spillway, and also sometimes referenced as an emergency spillway, is if there is a significant storm that occurs and that the principal spillway can't handle it all, you do not want to have water flowing over the dam because the dam is, has a steep slope and any water flowing over that would quickly erode it and cause it to fail. So we have this auxiliary spillway, which allows water to go around the dam safely. Piney Run Dam, there's, there are three levels of classification that are pretty much industry standard. Those levels are low hazard, significant hazard, and high hazard. Piney Run Dam is classified as a high hazard dam, it's the only high hazard dam that the county owns. And you can see in this aerial photo why it's a high hazard. As you can imagine, there is approximately fifty-four feet of water always stored behind the dam during a large storm that could get upwards of seventy, seventy-five feet of water. If that were to catastrophically let loose, you can see just downstream is Maryland Thirty-two. And then also Springfield Hospital and the residences and so on down there. So that would be a significant impact to people and infrastructure downstream if it were to catastrophically fail. Because it's classified as high hazard, there are very high standards for operation and maintenance of the dam. And one of those criteria is that the dam has to pass, safely pass, the most severe storm that could possibly happen in our region, and that'll be important in just a minute. I did want to emphasize, though, I don't want to sensationalize what we're looking at. The dam is very well maintained. It is inspected annually by both county engineers, state engineers, and NRCS engineers. We do that annually, our last inspection was just this past November. And as we have historically always had, very good marks as far as the condition and the maintenance. And there are no findings of the dam that are in immediate concern. This, as I'll get into, this is strictly a risk issue that MDE, the Maryland Department of Environment, has raised. So as I mentioned, the Maryland Department of the Environment dam safety is the regulations relate to the auxiliary spillway or emergency spillway. The first concern is related to the capacity, so how large the spillway is and whether it can pass enough water during that large storm. This spillway is over two hundred feet wide, so you can imagine it would be a significant amount of water that it could pass. The other concern that they raised was the erodability of that spillway. This is an earthen spillway, and so you can imagine if a lot of water was going through that, it could be susceptible to erosion. There is, at some point, you start getting into rock and then, but the question is, how deep is the rock? How susceptible to erosion would that rock also be? So MDE basically gave us a requirement that we perform an analysis of the dam to determine if their concerns were founded or not. And then if they, if they are, if there are concerns, then we had to mitigate those by 2027. So that's when we hired AECOM with the NRCS grant, and that grant has fully funded the study from AECOM. So the watershed study was pretty comprehensive and looked into a lot of various issues. All aspects of the dam were inspected, pretty significant hydrologic and hydraulics analysis of the dam. So that's basically looking at the rainfall and different storms, how the dam would function, how, what possibly catastrophically could occur. There was a significant amount of geotechnical analysis, those are borings, soil borings and rock borings in the spillway to determine how, what kind of material it was, whether it could erode. They did an analysis of how much sedimentation has occurred in the reservoir, which is important for us to know long-term if we ever did want to look at the reservoir for water supply. And then various environmental, cultural, and archaeological studies were performed around the, around the reservoir. It's a pretty comprehensive report, it's about six hundred and fifty pages and is posted on our website. You may recall, I believe it was last year, that one of the issues, one of the last issues we were dealing with was a concern raised by the Maryland Historic Trust related to a farmstead, the historic farmstead that was downstream of the dam. It's shown in the photos here, this is the end of the emergency spillway before it comes down and goes into the stream valley. And you can see the foundation of the barn for that farmstead. So we were required to do a Phase Two archaeological study, which NRCS funded, and that was performed last year. And it was found that there's no cultural significance that we need to be concerned about. So to talk about the concerns that MDE had raised, so looking at the dam and the functionality of it, we are required, because it's a high hazard, to look at what is called the probable maximum flood. And that is the worst flood imaginable that our region could be hit with. And it sounds, the amounts of rain and someone that we're talking about sound pretty incredible, but there historically, around the nation, there are locations that have been hit with, have experienced those probable maximum floods. So they are things, they are occurrences that can occur. In this case, we're talking about thirty-nine inches of rain in seventy-two hours, which would be pretty biblical. The largest storm that the dam has experienced was Hurricane Eloise in nineteen seventy-five, and that would be 2.7 times the amount of rainfall that we saw in Hurricane Eloise. And so the requirement is, is that that level of storm needs to be able to safely pass through the auxiliary spillway. Because again, you don't want any of that flow to go over the dam itself. And so if you look at the graphic on the right, the top graphic is a cross-section. So the, on the left side, the light blue is where the water level is at normal. During that type of storm event, the dark blue is where we would expect, we've modeled that the water would be, and we would have three to four feet of water going over the top of the dam. The exhibit on the bottom is looking at the face of the dam, so the dam embankment is on the left side. And you can see that we would have that three to four feet of water going over top. And this is where the auxiliary spillway is, and the goal would be to have all of that water in that spillway. So the solution to that, and Commissioner Kyler, I'm sure you can attest that a goal with any site project is to balance the site so that you don't, you're not importing or exporting material. So the goal would be to widen the spillway, take material from the edge of the spillway, and put that material on the dam to raise the height of the dam. So by doing, by raising the height of the dam by four feet or so, and by widening the spillway, we can then have all of that storm event over in the auxiliary spillway and safely pass around the dam. So that's conceptually what we would be looking to do.
And so the dam was completed in nineteen seventy-four, and the following year it got tested with Hurricane Eloise, that's interesting.
Yes, yeah. And what's also interesting is that Hurricane Eloise, being the largest storm, it did not have any water go through the auxiliary spillway. There's a little bit of a crest in the spillway, a little bit of a rise, and it came up to that, it came into the spillway and up to that, but water, no water actually flowed in the spillway itself.
Interesting.
But that being said, we haven't had a storm like that in fifty-some years. We could have one tomorrow or this year, so that's, that's the whole idea of the risk, is we want to mitigate that potential risk. So the other issue that MDE raised was spillway erosion, erodibility. This is a, an image from another NRCS dam, so it looks very similar to Piney Run Dam. It's the exact same type of design. And you can see what happened in this failure is that they had a large event where water was flowing through the auxiliary spillway and then it eroded back and then failed the dam. And so that's, that was the concern, that Piney Run could be susceptible to the same sort of thing if we experienced a very large storm. And so the, the geotechnical analysis, doing the borings in the spillway, determined that yes, there is, there is reason to be concerned because of the erodibility of the rock and the soil that are in that spillway. So the solution is twofold. One would be to armor the downstream end of the, of the spillway. The other is to construct a cutoff wall, which is essentially a, a trench that runs across the spillway filled with concrete. From the surface, it'll look like a sidewalk, but the idea being that if erosion starts working its way up the spillway, it would hit that concrete wall and be stopped before it got to the reservoir and, and failed the dam. So basically in summary, MDE's deadline was 2027. However, given the length of time it's taken us to get through the watershed study, I, I honestly don't feel that that deadline is reasonable. But I have been in communication with MDE and they're, they are fine with this taking longer than that deadline as long as we continue to make progress on it. And so the mitigation, again, is to raise the dam and widen the spillway and then armor the, the spillway so that it can't erode. The, the watershed study has indicated the estimated cost to be about $11 million for the design permitting and construction of that. And NRCS's program, which we are currently in, and we got funding for the first phase, could potentially, if we're successful in obtaining grant money from them, could cover 65% of those costs. So where, where we are today and our next steps. So the watershed study is published on the county website. Today is that public hearing. We also notified all applicable stakeholder agencies at the federal, state and local levels. I believe the date, the cough date for comments on that is April 13th. Once that, we finish that, then we will close out the watershed study. And then we will be applying to NRCS for the engineering design and permitting. And you may remember last week, you authorized me to send a letter to NRCS to, to indicate that we were interested in pursuing that funding. My educated guess is that design and permitting will take at least two years. And so that would at the earliest put us at construction, possibly in FY '28. But we shall see. We still have a fair amount of work that needs to be done. So I believe, yes, that is all I have. Certainly happy to answer any questions. And then I don't believe, I didn't see any public walk-in. We're joined by Meredith Miller, who works for the state NRCS. And I don't know if there are any phone calls, but certainly happy to answer any questions. And if anybody has any, any citizen comments, happy to hear them.
Have you gotten any comments yourself from, from?
No, we haven't, we have not. And we have, we have a link on our website that goes to a, an email mailbox that we've had in place since the beginning for, for people to comment. There, there was a lot of interest three or four years ago as we were studying alternatives and we did get a lot of feedback at that point. But that mailbox says we have not received anything recently.
Gotcha. And we have no public comment here? I'll make a motion to conclude the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Now a briefing discussion on chapter 156.
I brought reinforcements.
They look excited.
So good morning. Yes, we're here to, for a discussion about chapter 156, which is the county's adequate public facilities and concurrency management chapter. As you may remember, it was, I believe, late February that we were discussing one small piece of the APFO code. And the board directed us to start discussions with the planning commission regarding the, the scope of the, of the chapter. So what we've done is we've compiled information about the overall scope of what the chapter is. Because we'd like a little bit more specificity on what sections of the code that you would like us to look into, what aspects of the code, so that we can surgically go in and, and address those. So we can get answers back to you as soon as possible. Because in its entirety, the overall code is, is pretty significant. So our intent today is to walk through the, the sections to talk about those and then see which particular sections you would like us to look into, so we can get those done efficiently.
The purpose of the day isn't to approve or disapprove anything. It's to recommend how we proceed to look at.
Yes, exactly.
Additional direction.
Yes. So a little bit of background about chapter 156. So in general, the purpose is to ensure residential growth in the county will not unduly strain public facilities. And I know I personally, for a long time, wasn't sure what the difference was between adequate public facilities and concurrency management. And so I thought it would be helpful to, to explain the definition and the purpose, the two different purposes of the code and what the difference is, because they're sometimes used interchangeably. So the adequate public facilities portion is really the test on a project by project basis. So it looks at, at the impacts of a specific project. An example would be if there's a roadway that we test and we give it a letter rating and it's a C rating. And then a new development is proposed, that's going to increase the amount of traffic on that road. And we look at, we test the roadway for that particular project and, and then it goes to a, a rating of an F. So then that, it fails that test and would have to be addressed. So the adequate public facilities ordinance is really to, to do individual tests on specific projects. The concurrency management part of the code is, is a more holistic view of the same sort of facilities. But the, the, what comes of the concurrency management study is an annual report that we bring to you all to, to understand what is the state of the, of the adequacy of the various facilities that we're testing. So that decisions can be made from a policy perspective or from a budget perspective that, that may, that may need to occur. So it's, it's kind of the big picture and a report versus the individual tests. They are the same facilities that we're looking at. So we're going to talk today primarily about the APFO portion of this. But just understand that the concurrency management is, is kind of the big picture, looking at the same sort of things. So a little bit of history. It was in 1991 that the Board of County Commissioners formed an Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Committee. And that was really the genesis of, of looking at this. And it was February 1st, then 1993, so two years later, that the final report was presented. Then in March of 1998, the county code was finally adopted. Couple of things that have happened over the years since, from 2014 to 2016, there was a, a significant review of the thresholds for fire and EMS. Between 2002 to 2018, there were a couple of different code amendments related to the building permits allowed and number of lots that can be recorded. And as you recall, I believe it was last week, that you made a similar sort of change. And then this past February was when you asked us to start reviewing changes, potential changes with the Planning, Zoning Commission. So to break up the discussion, we've broken up the scope into five different aspects. And so I'll be going through each one of these to see which ones you're interested in us having further discussions with planning commission over. The first is what types of projects are tested. So at a very, very high level, we're talking about residential projects. But there are different types of residential projects and I'll get into which ones we test for and which ones we don't test for. So once you figure out which projects are tested, then the question becomes what public facilities get tested. So this is like water and sewer capacity and so on. So the what in this case. Then we, we can talk about how are they tested? So if we didn't decide that, yes, we are testing for water capacity, how do we test for the water capacity, right? And so there's that question for each of the different types of tests. And then when do we test? So during the development review process, as a developer is going through that overall process, when are they tested for adequacy? And then finally, if a development is, is, it's determined that a facility is inadequate and does not support the development, what are the implications of that and how can the development move forward? So I will go through each of these then. So the first question, what types of projects are tested? Quick clarification, I'm sure you probably know, but just for everybody's benefit, the county has what are called minor subdivisions and major subdivisions. A minor subdivision is less than four lots. A major subdivision is more than four lots, or four lots or more. So we test for major subdivisions. We do not test minor subdivisions. Also, what we test for are residential site plans. So this is a, a project where there's no subdivision occurring. It's all in one site. So think in terms of like an age restricted housing complex, Nell's Acres, you may be familiar with and so on, where there's common ownership of multiple dwelling units. So we test for those and mobile home parks. What we do not test for, we do not test off conveyances, as I mentioned, minor subdivisions. And this is purely residential, not commercial industrial. We don't test any government uses of property. Occasionally, we will have a plat or a site plan that comes through that may have residential use on it. But if there's not an increase in the residential density, we would not retest that project. Agriculturally preserved properties often will have what are called child's lots as part of the preserved property. We do not test those, those child's lots. Accessory dwelling units, so if you're putting a nanny suite over top of your garage, that sort of thing, we do not test for those. And then projects in municipalities, we do not test those. The municipalities have their own APFO codes. So.
Are childcare?
Yes.
Facilities ADUs?
Childcare facility, no. An ADU is a dwelling unit. It's, it's, so it would be like an apartment or a secondary house that, where someone lives.
But you can't build an additional room and make that into a childcare, onto a house?
You can.
Like a daycare?
Like a daycare, yeah.
But that doesn't impact this.
Yeah, that does not affect the dwelling units or the APFO.
Okay, okay.
So I'm, I'm going to pause here for just a minute to see if there's any discussion related to the types of projects that, that we wanted, that we do test or we want to test and, and so on.
I think that, that there's more expense when I do a major subdivision. But when I go to three to four lots, it jumps up. But does it jump up for the things that are not tested? Or is there any waiver of fees when, when it doesn't apply, kind of? You know, does that make sense? We, we talked about one the other day.
Yes, yeah.
It jumps from 3,600 to 18 grand. But if it's exempt from testing, there's other, there's other things that happen, but it still gets charged the same amount.
Yes, so per the code, it, we differentiate when a minor subdivision versus a major. And then there are fees, development review fees associated with, that are different from majors versus minors. So if you cross that threshold, now you're into the, into those development review fees. And also if it becomes a major, we would then test it for, for adequate public facilities.
Unless it was under this list of not tested.
So, correct. But if you become a major subdivision, that is one of the things that we test for. So if you go from three to four, now we are testing you for.
So, so the not tested are only for minor?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
I'll understand this someday.
So how frequently do we have minor subdivisions, suites over garages, that kind of thing? I mean, does it accumulate in any appreciable way where it would have an effect on adequate facilities or concurrency? Which would be the better term?
Yeah, so in that, so that's why we do the concurrency, right? Is so that the, the APFO test, when we test that individual project, and for example, an accessory dwelling unit unto itself is not going to, to trigger an issue, right? So that's why we don't even test for it, because you're talking about one dwelling unit. But that's why we do the concurrency management every year, because that looks at everything. So it looks at municipal projects, it looks at minor subdivisions, all, basically everything that's occurred during the, the previous year and compares it to, to the, the current status of adequacy of the various things we're testing. So that's where we come to you all once a year and present that information so you can make decisions.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Then I'll move on to the next, the next section, which is what facilities we test for. So this is a chart that, the top row is the county. So we test for schools, water, sewer, roads, police and fire EMS. The next rows below that are our, all of our municipalities. As I mentioned, they all have their own APFO codes. And for the most part, they mimic what the county tests for, but there are some additional ones. So for instance, Mount Airy and Tawny Town test for parks and open space. Sykesville and Tawny Town and Westminster test for storm drains. Hampstead, Sykesville, Tawny Town, Westminster test for solid waste. Sykesville tests for traffic control and Westminster tests for healthcare facilities. The last four rows are other counties surrounding us. As you can see, they're pretty consistent in testing for school, water, sewer and roads. They do, most do not test for police. Only Washington County tests for fire EMS, similar to ourselves. And then they add in some additional ones. Baltimore County tests for parks and open space. I'm really interested in, in Baltimore County and Howard County, they indicate stormwater. I did not have the time to delve into exactly what they're testing for, but I assume that that's more related to flood control, not water quality. Howard County, as you know, has Ellicott City, so they don't want similar sort of situations occurring there. And Baltimore County has some pretty critical watersheds like the Gwynne's Falls and so on that could impact Baltimore City. So there's state requirements related to looking at flood issues for any development that are in those watersheds. And then Howard County tests for solid waste. So essentially, what we're looking for here is if there's any interest from the board of, of looking at or removing any of the public facilities that, that we currently test for. And then we would obviously start the discussions with those agencies that, that are responsible for those things and work with planning commission and so on. But it's another pause for, for your interest in, in looking at what facilities we test for.
An option, I think. Rather than eliminate any of them, and can we make them advisory versus mandatory? And the other counties you have listed below, are they all mandatory or?
Yeah, so, so that gets into sort of towards the end of the, the discussion, which is what happens if something is determined to be inadequate.
Yep.
We, we have not done the research as to how strong, I don't know what the right term is.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah, the, the other counties, other jurisdictions requirements are, whether they're advisory or whether they put a dead halt on, on the development and so on. That's certainly that we could, stuff we could look into.
What is? And my initial concern with this was schools, back when I was on that side of the street. And, and the commissioners, the commissioners felt like they could tell the school system to redistrict. Obviously they can, it didn't work. And, and my opinion is if these stay mandatory, why do we consider schools? That's their problem. If, if the population goes up feeding Manchester Elementary, then CCPS has to decide how they handle. handle it, not us. We, we can't control it for water sewer, roads, police and fire and EMS. We have much more control. And, and so that was my initial thought, is, is to eliminate that one. But then my second thought was, what if we made them all advisory? Again, chief, don't come up here and smack me, but we're throwing a lot of money at EMS. If they would tell us they're inadequate, I would be very upset with them. Water and sewer is pretty obvious. If you can't have water and sewer, you're stuck. But roads, police and fire and EMS, and again, like you say, we'll get to what they can do. I saw in York County, when Memorial Hospital was built, that, that project was required to modify like fourteen intersections, some a mile or two away. You know, is that always an option? That, okay, the intersection of, of twenty-seven and thirty is inadequate, can I fix it? Or am I stuck? And so it's, you ask tough questions. But I don't know if I made sense, but, but the schools are the ones we don't control.
Right.
And, and I know from being on that side of the street, the schools are quite happy to, if you have growth, you don't have growth. The other thing the public doesn't understand, a subdivision of, pick something, a hundred houses, has very little effect on the schools. It's, it's more birth rates and who moves in and who doesn't. And it's a lot of other factors, more than just that a house was built.
Yes, yeah.
And, and, and I guess I feel strongly, the schools, it's the schools' problem. You know, if, and I use the example of Freedom Elementary, it's considered by the state overcrowded. If you do an addition and pull the portables, then it's considered okay. Well, it's the same number of kids and the same number of classrooms. That's, that's a foolish statistic. But the other fact is, and, and I guess Bob Lord told me that when I first got on the board, as far as schools are concerned, you redistrict for academic performance or cost. And Freedom Elementary is probably one of the best performing elementary schools in the county. So it maybe doesn't need to have kids moved out of it. But we're, we're trying to control developments that I think it's a foolish statistic and the schools, that's the schools' problem.
Yeah, understood, yeah. Yeah, and I think, like I said, I think we'll get that.
Yeah, but I don't know how others feel.
What's the, what's the difference between traffic control and just regular traffic? Because isn't the issue of traffic implied with the testing on police and fire and EMS because it's response times? So help, help me understand that.
That's a good question. I did not delve into what Sykesville's ordinance says about traffic control. Personally, I think that, so the way we address that is more on the roadside. So when I think traffic control, I'm thinking of signal timing and, and things like that. I'm assuming that that's what they need. And we address that on the roadside. So when we evaluate the capacity of the roads and the capacity of the intersections, and we look at timing of, signal timing on state highway roadways and a number of lanes and so on, that's where we're addressing the APFO for, for that. We can certainly look into Sykesville's ordinance on traffic control and see what it is that they talk to and what kind of additional restrictions. I was not sure about that one.
No, that's okay. Now you answer my question. My concern was more the latter part of that, but thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, Commissioner Garrett, I was going to ask a very similar question. What was the difference between roads and traffic? And so I, I think we should take a look at adding traffic control as something to consider because, you know, we changed, I think it was last week, we changed the, the limit on the number of houses from twenty-five to fifty. Obviously, we have the DARA floating around. We do have some larger projects such as the Veterans Home. I know that's something the Commissioner Rossing talks about a lot. Shamrock Farm and how that'll affect traffic and things down in, you know, the southeast or southwestern part of the county. And so, you know, if we are looking for some, I guess modest commercial and residential development in the coming years, you know, trying to understand traffic patterns and flow and control is, would be important to, to doing that.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly look at, at Sykesville and what their requirements are and, and ensure that if we're missing something on the roadside, what could we, how could we potentially modify the roads side of the APFO? Or does adding a separate traffic control APFO make sense?
Okay.
So we'll look into that.
So for us as a county, just, just so I'm completely, I'm completely getting this, something like traffic right now falls under roads for us?
Yes, yeah. But there's, it's very possible they're doing something that we're not, so we'll, we'll check into it.
And I think it's not odd that the state or the county, when does a traffic study, may say you need a traffic signal. You know, it's not just roads as far as blacktop, it's.
Yes.
It's controlled too.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I was curious why Sykesville had that. And I was curious why some of the jurisdictions had solid waste. Now, some of them do their own garbage collection, but, you know, again, they don't control landfill.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So the, the next level that we then get to is, after we've identified which facilities we're testing, the question is how do we test them? And I'm not going to read through all of these, just have them here for, for reference. But this is probably the most complex and involved portion of, of the whole code, right? And, and where the most debate comes about. From a school's perspective, it's percent of capacity. For fire and EMS, it's the number of late and no responses. For police, it's the ratio of sworn officers to population. Roads, that we could really get in that we just talked about, really go down a rabbit hole as far as how those are done. But essentially, it's a, a grade for roads and intersections, an A through F grade. And there's a methodology for calculating that, looking at the existing service. And then you add in the additional trips that a new development is going to, to do and see if it causes it to fail. And if, if a roadway or intersection moves into a failure, then it's determined to be inadequate and has to be addressed. And then water and sewer is a lot simpler to, to understand. It's basically a percent of capacity. So as long as the water or sewer system is operating at less than eighty-five percent of capacity, then it's adequate. You go to eighty-five to ninety-five, then it's approaching, and over ninety-five percent, it's, it's inadequate. So any questions on how we test these?
EMS and fire?
Yes.
The majority of the calls are EMS. And prior to two years ago, three years ago, you would ask the local fire company. Now, do you ask them and EMS both? Or do you just ask EMS? Or how does that happen?
That's why I brought Laura here.
Well.
She gets into the details.
And if you want to just get back to us, you know, it's, yeah.
Right, we, we do hear from the individual fire companies, and that information is usually filtered through our public safety as well. So I would have to check specifics as to who exactly that form work is going to for different areas of the county. I don't have that answer today, sorry.
And, and my experience years ago, you have presidents and chiefs change. You know, some of them in, in conversation would say, I was just asked about fire adequacy. I have no idea what they wanted, so I'm just going to say yes. You know, it's okay. You know, it's, it's, it's where now that we have a department, it's, like I say, I'd struggle if they said it wasn't adequate, but they have a lot more data and statistics.
What was, what was interesting is that, as you know, we recently had our sessions in the, with the community, where our community outreach for the master plan. And so I attended those. And in a couple of the jurisdictions, I had individuals come and talk to me about fire EMS, that they were concerned with, if there's additional growth in the county, will the county have enough resources to address that additional growth? And what I could point to was, well, that's the purpose of our APFO chapter, is that we evaluate individual projects as they come through and make sure that right at this time, everything is adequate. And then we also do the concurrency management, where we come to you all and present the statistics that we've pulled from all of the fire EMS and the various companies to, to report to you all and identify if there is an issue, so that if there is an issue, that you all could address it. So it's, that's one of the primary benefits of the APFO ordinance and, and chapter, is that it provides something we can hang our hat on. It's not just a subjective, yes, we feel that we have enough police in the, in the county. We have a metric and we can test for, and we can indicate we have enough police in the, in the county. So it provides an answer that we can hang our hat on.
And, and it's interesting, Union Bridge doesn't include either one of the police or fire and EMS, and our most closest counties don't. That's, that's, I'm glad you guys added that, because that's interesting.
It's interesting, yeah.
That they do not.
So the last aspect then is when we test and what are the ramifications of inadequacies? So we've talked with you a couple of times before, and I think I've likened it to gates that developers have to get through, tests that they have to get through. And so really, there are two times that, that developers have to get through these tests of adequate public facilities. The first is the Planning and Zoning Commission approval process. So in order for the Planning and Zoning Commission to issue a final approval, the APFOs have to be adequate. If they are not, there are three ways that they can move forward. The first is if the developer themselves can fix the issue. And this often occurs when you're talking about like roadway capacity or an intersection, right? If an intersection nearby their development is going to become inadequate because of the additional traffic that they're going to generate, then they would normally address that mitigation themselves. So they would improve the, the intersection. Another way that, that inadequacy can be addressed is if the county has a project that's going to address it within, in the CIP within the next six years. So this could be, cover any, any manner of, of facilities, right? So it could be a roadway. It could be an intersection that if the county DPW was planning on doing an improvement to that roadway intersection in the next six years, and that was going to fix the adequacy issue, then that would be acceptable for the planning commission to go ahead and approve the plan.
Why six years? Like out of every number, why not five? Why not seven? Why six in particular?
For the, the extent of the budget that, that you all take a look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just curious if there's like a technical reason for it being six years versus five or seven or something?
Just, just your CIP.
Okay.
Yep. And then the, the final option, which is always an option, is that you, the Board of County Commissioners, can determine that there's some sort of exceptional circumstance. So it's sort of the get out of jail free card idea that if the developer is not able to address it and the county doesn't have a CIP, but you all determine that there's something exceptional going on, that it's not, it's not a significant issue, you can always override and give the planning commission the ability to approve the plan. So the, the second check then, once the planning commission has approved the, the project and the developer is then working towards the legal aspect of it, which is the recordation of those subdivision lots and so on, and the plats, there is another test. And that is related to adequacy. And similarly, if the developer is proposing mitigation to address it, then we would allow them to go ahead and record the plats. In this case, the CIP project is a little bit different in the code in that it says that the issue has to be under construction and within six months of being complete. And then there's always the, the Board of County Commissioners option. And this was evidenced relatively recently with Mineral Hill. So as you may remember, Mineral Hill, twelve or thirteen lot subdivision in the Freedom Elementary School area. They've, they've finished their plans and they waited then until the Board of County Commissioners approved the budget for the expansion of Freedom Elementary. So that put it in the CIP. So that allowed them to pass that first gate. So the planning commission could approve it because it was in the CIP. Then they were, they would have to wait until Freedom Elementary was under construction and within six months of being complete, for them to actually record the plats. And that's where they came before you all and asked for an exceptional circumstance to be determined, that they could go ahead prior to Freedom Elementary being under construction. So the way I liken this whole process to it is, it's sort of like the, the indicator lights on the dashboard. These tests identify when there are issues, either with a specific project or overall from the concurrency management perspective. We can address the, the light on the dashboard, or we can choose to ignore the light on the dashboard and we can proceed. But there's not a hard and fast, there is code requirement that all stop. There is always that option where it can be brought before you all, and you can determine that really this inadequacy is not a significant issue and should not be holding up development, and they can go ahead and proceed.
How often does that happen? I mean, that recently happened, but is, is that common? It doesn't seem like developers push that.
In, in the twelve plus years I've been here, the Mineral Hill was the second one that I recall ever seeing.
But to that end, I mean, how often do things get hung up by, for adequacy?
Correct, they.
They don't.
I mean, it's a real question, I'm just asking. I, I assume it doesn't happen very often.
It does not happen often, no.
That may be.
What was the first one?
It was a fire EMS issue, and it's going all the way back probably ten, eleven years, so, but off of memory.
That's right.
It was a fire EMS.
It was a fire EMS. I mean, that, you know, is a testament to smart growth, that we communicate APFO and we communicate what developers can and cannot do. So they're not going to waste, spend their resources on something that's not going to happen. And they, you know, grease the skids through communications. And that's, that's a good thing. We're very transparent with what is allowed and what's not allowed. So when they come in front of us, they're prepared. And that's, that's huge. I don't know if other counties are as transparent about it or as open about it, but it sure seems that we are. So it surprised me there's only two. I thought there'd be more, but that's incredible, you know? To think that there's only two.
And, and I, I think at least the surrounding counties are, it's, it's very transparent. And, and, because what I saw in Frederick County many years ago, they had a lot of water sewer issues. They solved them, and then all of a sudden it was school issues. And that's where I first saw the fifty-five and older developments happening, just to get around the school issue.
Right.
And I assume in Carroll County, they're, they're not tied to schools.
Correct, yes. Fifty-five and older is not tested for schools. So that's essentially how we've broken out the, the scope. It's the what gets tested, what, what projects get tested, what facilities get tested, how they're tested, and then what are the ramifications? So we've certainly made note of looking at traffic control and, and whether that's something that should be incorporated into the APFO. We can absolutely do that, and that's, that's a small lift. We can turn that around relatively quickly. Daphne didn't kick me, so.
Thank you.
Other than senior housing, are, are there any other exceptions to any of these adequate facilities things? That's prob, that's the biggest one, definitely, but.
Senior housing for schools, other than that? I, no, I can't think of any.
I'll tell you, the, the over fifty-five are selling. I mean, and. I mean, and there's more being built down in, uh, the Freedom Growth Area. And, um, it's not that it's over cra- they're, they're selling. I mean, there's a market. So.
Mr. Kyler did mention the idea of, of making it more of a waiver, or not, uh, more of a recommendation than a, than a stop. I don't know if you want them to look into that.
I think that ought to be part of what they look at and-
Yes, we can do that. Yeah. We can look at some of the other counties and, and how strict or loose they are with, with the requirements, um, and then how we address it and, and compare that. Yes.
Does it give the Planning and Zoning Commission, well, it does, that much more, um, you know, ability to, to move forward with projects? I mean, that's kind of what, you know, we'd be doing by doing that, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, off the top of my head, I can't picture how-
If something's advi-
That might be different, right.
Well, if something's advisory-
Yeah.
As opposed to regulatory, you know, then you're giving somebody the ability to say, you know, to authorize an exception.
Yes.
You know, to the rule.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
And thanks for all this, but, uh, I love seeing the history, you know?
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously people care very much about the adequate public facilities, concurrency management processes. They care about it, but as often is the case, they don't start paying attention until it's too late. So this is why these things are important. Um, I, I definitely want to understand what we're asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to do. If it's just to try to find ways to waive things or, or lessen the, or how we're testing, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that. But why wouldn't we test for commercial and industrial then? If that is what we're trying to accomplish, if we can, here in the county, the most. And those are always going to be on re- bigger roadways as, as well likely. I mean, who wants to put commercial, industrial on a country road? So why wouldn't we test for those?
So from a, uh, so we do. So that's part of, um, but it's not part of the APFO, um, chapter. The APFO is, is related strictly to residential. The testing for roadway capacity is, um, something that's done, um, as part of the traffic impact study that's required based on the use. So if, if a commercial or industrial use is going to, um, in, provide an increase at a certain threshold of the number of vehicles on the roadway, then they are required to do a traffic impact study. And that's addressed through Chapter 155, our Development Review Chapter. Did I essentially get that right?
Yeah, I was, I was pretty impressed with that. I thought you were gonna look at me. So, yes, that's the answer. It is in Chapter 155. We do look at facilities related to. It's just not part of this chapter.
Okay.
Takes a lot to impress her, so be careful.
I'm getting a gold star later.
And sometimes we get our hands tied if it's on a state road. If the state waives the traffic study, we can't make them, right?
Yes, correct. So, uh, what's interesting is that the state relies on our APFO to require developers to test. So the state themselves do not have an APFO. Um, so, so our code requires the test to happen, then the state is brought in because it's their infrastructure when you're talking about state roadways. And then they review it and they approve and, and so on, any mitigation that happens on the state roadways. But they, they wash their hands of the actual APFO side of things and rely on local jurisdictions.
And, and, and a recent example is the Ethiopian Church.
Yes.
Because they didn't require one and then they kind of even waived the site distance, which we can't overrule.
Correct, yes.
So based on our discussion, would they like, would we like them to look into this more?
Uh, for the roads and traffic portion, yes, I'd certainly like more information about that. Thank you.
Yes. And then as well as the, um, looking at different options for, at the, what happens if something is inadequate. Yes. Yeah. I think with, with that, we've got a clear direction and we can move forward.
So we're asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to do two things?
Yes. And-
I want, I want us to be specific with the Planning Commission.
Yeah. And, and so what we'll do is, it's going to take us some time because we will do the research, staff will do the research and come up with various options and explain what other jurisdictions do and so on. And we will present all of that information to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission will come back and give recommendations as far as, um, if, if they recommend that we modify and add traffic controls, for example, and what that might look like. So it'll be several meetings with Planning Commission to, to work through the nuances and the details. And then we'll bring all of that back to you all for further discussion. And we can certainly have work sessions, um, discussions such as this. Uh, and actually, I think I've got a slide for next steps. Yes, perfect. So, um, yeah, so we'll return back with their recommendations. And then it's entirely up to the board as to, um, additional discussions, work sessions, all of that. Ultimately, if you are leaning towards making a change to the code, then we would have to have a public hearing and then, um, and then you can make the amendments.
And, and I think you've done this portion, um, pretty quickly. Um, as far as the next process, I don't, I think everybody agrees, this isn't an emergency. This isn't one of those things that if we don't do it by September 1st, we're, we can't or anything like that. So this is-
Yes, we appreciate that. Yes, it's-
Yeah.
Um, every, every text amendment, there's a, a multi-month, um, process to it. And, um, we are, as an aside, we are obviously watching the state legislature and what they're, um, proposing because, uh, we anticipate there are going to be a number of, of county codes that, that were, from a land use perspective, that we're going to have to delve into and go through the same process, um, and, and revise. So, um, we've got a full plate, um, but, um, that was the purpose of today is we really wanted to dial into the specifics because we want to get this back to you as, as quickly as possible and not necessarily go off on a two or three-year, um, uh, work session.
Do we need a motion to, for them to proceed or we're, we've discussed it, we're fine?
I think the, I think the director is, but as long as you guys feel clear with the motion. And if they have questions, they can come back.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Daphne, were you just here for moral support?
I'm sure we'll be seeing you again.
I'm warm in the seat. I'm, I'm registering the, um, how we need to approach this with the Planning Commission mostly, yeah.
And she's here to kick me if I say something that, or commit to something.
Or the buffer, so I can't kick him.
Yes.
You should have him sat in the middle.
You're right. Thank you.
I don't think he could handle that.
Thank you, guys. And now we're ready to talk about, um, Advanced Life Support with, uh, EMS.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Chief.
Our issue is, uh, we're requesting approval to submit a fiscal year 25 Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services Systems Advanced Life Support Funding Grant, uh, Application, and to subsequently accept the award. Um, to summarize that is, we have approximately 100 paramedics and they're required to maintain a state license, which is a two-year cycle. So, uh, the amount of this grant is $10,432. And what that will be is essentially a reimbursement for the costs that we incur, uh, for conducting continuing education at our academy. Um, so, um, this will help us in our overall, uh, cost for the, uh, recertification. So this is 100% funding. Uh, there is no match to this grant. And so we're requesting, uh, permission to proceed and, uh, receive the reimbursement once we've done the training.
Okay. I'll move the board approve the submission of FY25 ALS Funding Grant Application and Accept the Award.
Second.
I've motioned a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you back? Are you a yes?
I'm a yes, yep.
Okay, 5-0. Now Citizen Service approval to accept a grant funding. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm, uh, I'm Celine Steckel. I'm the Director of Citizen Services and I'm joined today by Gina Valentine, our Bureau Chief of Aging and Disabilities, and Maggie Kuntz, uh, who is our, um, colleague from the Health Department. And she is a health planner with Carroll County. Um, and we are here today for, seeking approval to accept the building our largest dementia, otherwise known as BOLD, grant funding and the execution of the contract with the Carroll County Health Department. And I'm going to turn it over. Um, it's a $5,000 grant, $3,500 we're slating to use for marketing and then the other, um, $1,000 to use, um, actually other $1,500.
$1,500, sorry.
Sorry about that. There's a mistake. To use for a total of $5,000. Lucky it was easy math for me. But, um, so, uh, but for a total of $5,000 to use, um, for these purposes, uh, to target dementia education and training. So I'm going to turn it over to Maggie to talk a little bit about the funding and what, what the uses are for that and how we'll, uh, collaborate with the Health Department.
So, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Uh, just a quick background on this funding. Um, as Celine mentioned, it's the building our largest dementia infrastructure grant. Um, it is from the CDC and goes through the Maryland Department of Health. Um, and as far as we know, for now, we expect that to continue through FY26. Um, so the, the grant, uh, funding is intended to increase awareness of cognitive health issues and dementia, uh, screening and resources. And there are two components that the local health departments are, uh, in charge of. One of them is working with local providers to increase their cognitive screening. So more patients will go through cognitive screening more regularly. Um, and then also to work with those providers to make sure that they have local and regional resources to give to anybody who screens positive. So we're currently working with a few providers here in Carroll County and looking for additional providers to work with to increase their use of, of cognitive screening and local resources. Uh, the second part of the grant is to work with local organizations to increase awareness of dementia and cognitive screening, uh, in the general public. And, um, we are, we're hopefully, we're working with, with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities, of course, our local experts in this area, um, uh, and also working with the Alzheimer's Association to do a few, uh, specific activities to increase awareness in the, in the general community of both cognitive screening and the resources available. So I'll let Gina talk a little bit more about the specifics.
Yeah. Good morning again. Um, so with the, the funding, and of course, we always love our partnerships with our community providers and once again, the, the Health Department. And this will just enhance the dementia navigation piece that was added to Maryland Access Point within our agency. Um, we're going to use some of the funding to, again, bring awareness. We're gonna, um, add some information to our annual resource guide, which we're currently working on, about dementia resources and dementia education. Um, we're also, um, planning to use some of the funding, when it talks about training and education, for, um, exercise classes that improve brain health. Um, Tai Chi, for example, is one of them. And so, and then there's also some educational sessions, sessions, excuse me, that are scheduled, um, within, um, two of our senior centers so far. Um, and some additional training sessions as well in partnership with the Alzheimer's Association. Um, so it's great to work with, with them as well. Um, so, I mean, I think that's all we have. If you have any questions?
This, uh, as always, is awesome, the work you're doing. The, uh, dementia associated with Alzheimer's is pretty clear in having that partnership. But there's also dementia associated with other illnesses. Um, do we have, I mean, we're, we're focused on the dementia piece of this, not the Alzheimer's piece, correct?
Right, right.
So those going into Tai Chi or any other, you know, cognitive programs, it's not that they're Alzheimer's with dementia. It's dementia and possibly Alzheimer's with other. Is that fair statement?
Sure. So there's, there's many different types of dementia.
Right.
Um, and so, yes, I mean, the, the, in, improving your brain health or working on that is, is proven to decrease, I think, risks of dementia, um, as well. And so we're intending also to give some literature to individuals who attend those classes about resources. Um, Maggie talked about assessments. We have an assessment that we can administer now. It's, it's a very short questionnaire. It's 10 questions. It's called an AD8. And, um, that, for people who decide that they want to take it, because it's a scary thing. Many people don't want to, denial is a beautiful thing sometimes, um, right? No, not really. Um, but for people that decide that they want to take that assessment to see where they're at and, and recognize if maybe they should be talking to somebody else, going back to their physician, um, to really further explore and then, um, talk about treatments. Sorry, that was long-winded. I hope I answered your question.
No, no, I, I appreciate it. No, it, it's important to be long-winded on this. It's, it's a, a major issue.
It is a major issue. And there's, um, in Maryland, but also Carroll County, there's, there's pretty high rates of, of dementias in Carroll County. Um, and so, you know, all the efforts that, that we can collectively, you know, implement and push out to the community to bring awareness and, and ensure people that, you know, that they're reaching out to their, their physicians and getting assistance there. And also knowledgeable about resources then, that can still help them to remain safely in the community.
Right.
So it'll really be a range of information from just cognitive health, preserving your cognitive health, you know, prevention, all the way to dementia care and resources. So, and we'll be, I think we'll be, um, we'll also be implementing a, a campaign through the Health Department that will, you know, that you will help inform. Um, and then an MDH has some resources for us as well that will be more of a public awareness campaign. So that will also run the gamut sort of between cognitive health issues all the way through dementia, dementia screening and resources.
I appreciate it's huge and very well said, both of you, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to approve the submission of the FY25 ALS Funding Grant Application and Accept the Award.
Second.
Um, I've motioned a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait, hold on, wait. I apologize. I read the wrong thing. I apologize. I got, I had the wrong motion. I hadn't turned it. I apologize. My fault.
Put another acronym in there.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you modified or shortened it, but go ahead.
Motion to approve the acceptance and grant funding and the execution of the contract with, wait a second.
No.
That's what you read.
Yeah, wait, but you said no.
The contract.
No, I'm-
You, you just, you-
I had it right, yeah.
You had it right?
Okay. Wait, but somebody said no.
No, you're fine.
Oh, okay.
No, yeah.
You just made sure I had it right that time.
I thought you skipped a few words, but it didn't change.
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, I'm-
There's not a cognitive health screening.
No, there's no cognitive health screening.
I think you're good.
Motion to approve the acceptance of the grant funding and the execution of the contract with the Carroll County Health Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a modified motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now-
Thank you so much.
Contract award, uh, Community Asset Map Assessment and Strategic Community Plan.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, first team. Morning, second team.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of Citizen Services requests your approval to award the contract for the Community Asset Map Assessment and Strategic Community Plan to Dewey Partners LLC in the amount not to exceed $52,800. The Department of Citizen Services received proposals for the above project. An evaluation committee was formed to conduct tech- technical and financial review of the proposal submitted. The committee evaluated all proposals based on criteria detailed in the proposal. The highest ranked firm for this project is Dewey's Partners LLC. The amount is within the FY25 adopted budget. And I will turn it over to Celine, too.
Have you worked with them before?
I personally have not, but we as a county have. And, and we were excited to see, we had multiple applicants, um, and that submitted proposals for this. And we were excited to see Dewey's because they have done a lot of work with the, the local management boards across the state. They're positioned in, um, Annapolis is where they, they are based out of. Um, and they've worked with over 15 local management boards in the past, over the past 10 years. And we are familiar with their work. We've also had trainings provided to our LMB and our community that they've done. And they really mirror the, the same platforms that we, um, that we work from. And that's the, uh, community impact-based model and also results-based accountability. So all of our providers are familiar with that because we've done trainings across the, the region on those, um, some with this company and some with others. But this company is really a leader in, in that. So it was great to see their proposal. They already know the intricacies of local management board work, which is very unique. As you all know, sometimes hard to understand and, and see where all the pieces pull together. But, um, definitely we were excited to see that the award, um, go to them.
And, and this is 100% paid for by a grant?
Correct.
And could you very, very briefly talk about the Enough Act and the grants in, in that capacity and what the overall purpose is?
Sure. And, um, just to remind people, um, the Enough Act is, I'm going to turn it over to Addie.
It's engaging neighborhoods, unions, organizations, and governments.
It's engaging neighborhoods, unions, organizations, and governments and households. So, it's, Governor Wes Moore has the initiative to end child poverty, and so he was awarded different money to local management boards. And in that, Carroll County was awarded a set amount of money to focus on ending child poverty here in the community. We have two specific areas that we are to focus on. One is a section in Westminster, and the other is the town of Union Bridge. Commissioner Vigilati and Commissioner Gordon both got to come with us to present to the local town halls and really kind of get them involved because this is going to be really a large effort between everybody to get together to work on getting some of these numbers down and creating some generational wealth here in the community.
And Addie, you and Celine and Ed and everybody else involved with making these presentations did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And just to tie this in, when we come back before you, I believe either next week or the following week, with our CPA NOFA for the local management boards, they are tying the pillars of the Enough Act and the focus there into what we do with the local management board funding that comes from the Governor's Office of Children and their children's interagency fund. So, we will hear this theme throughout as we, as we are approaching and working with our providers on how to administer those programs.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
And I highly recommend Dew East. I worked with them. I hired them. They ran a campaign for us, building the residency program on installation, multimillion-dollar program. I'm going to abstain from the vote because of my direct relationship with them, but they are just a very high caliber team. So.
I will make a motion to award the contract for the Community Asset Map Assessment and Strategic Community Plan to Dew East Partners LLC in the amount not to exceed $52,800.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and it was the correct motion. Thank you. And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, we have 401 abstention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Now, the Comptroller's Office would like approval to purchase Debtbook Bundled Subscription.
I like that sigh.
Unbridled enthusiasm.
Very, very dramatic today.
It's kind of like the way I talk to you. Unbridled enthusiasm.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of the Comptroller requests your approval to purchase Debt Accounting SaaS from Debtbook in the amount of $138,000. The yearly installments and terms are subject to approval from the Department of the Comptroller and to the availability of funds. The first year amount is approved in the FY25 budget.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just so you know, Debtbook, we've had around for several years now. It is a powerful cloud-based system that we use to track debt leases and subscription management. It allows the Comptroller's Department and the county to stay compliant with our GASB accounting standard, or, excuse me, our government accounting standards boards. And those statements are 87 leases and 96 subscriptions. So, we can gather information correctly, record liabilities, record accounts receivables, maintain that in our ledger, and stay compliant with any audits. And we have unlimited number of users, so other departments can log in and use this as needed. We can keep the contracts all in one location.
And what does SaaS stand for?
Software as a Service.
It's web-based.
Yes, all cloud.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Debt Accounting Software as a Service from Debtbook in the amount of $138,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, contract award for Public Works Engineering Design Construction Related Services for replacement of a bridge.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering received proposals for the above project. An evaluation committee was formed to conduct technical and financial review of the proposals submitted. The committee evaluated all proposals based on criteria detailed in the request for proposal. The highest ranked firm for this project is Wallace Montgomery in the amount not to exceed $310,655. The amount is within the FY25 adopted budget.
Morning. The Hawks Hill Road structure, we think, was built circa 1960, but we don't have any detailed records to, it could be older than that. The structure's 13 feet long. It's currently rated in fair condition, however, has a weight restriction of 46,000 pounds for single axle and 60,000 pounds for combination axles. Structure consists of concrete encased steel beams on an old stone masonry abutments. With the beams being encased in concrete, we don't know the conditions of the beams, and we have some evidence of deterioration that is going on right now. Because we don't have plans and the concrete, the beams are encased in concrete, this is on an annual inspection basis, not our four-year typical inspection basis. So, once it's replaced, it'll go back to our four-year. We'll save some money on the inspection. Wallace Montgomery has performed this type of work before for us, and they're eager to get started on the design.
And what district is it in?
I believe it would be in District 1. So, it's New Windsor, outside of New Windsor.
Just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, you know, going to take a motion away from somebody else.
Yeah. So, this is design, and it says construction-related. That's inspection?
So, they will handle the request for information, they'll ask, or shop drawings, things like that through, they'll assist us with the construction phase of that. We do it all at once, so we don't have to go back and get another price and come back up here.
Will this construction be eligible for federal money?
No, this is under 20 feet, so this is 100% county.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And, no, I can't.
Can we make it longer?
No, there's a driveway right there, and then MDE's already told us that you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't make it. If it was like another six inches, we might be able to sneak that, but I, no, I can't do six, I can't do seven feet. They will not allow us to do that.
So, it's 27 feet?
It's 13 feet. So, 20 feet is the standard for a major or minor. So, anything 20 feet and above is federally eligible for funding.
And this bridge is at 13?
It's. So, I need, I need to get seven more feet somewhere.
You're joking. You can't get seven more feet.
I thought you were trying to get it to 27 feet. That was where I got lost. Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to award the contract for Engineering Design and Construction Related Services for the replacement of bridge number CL 242X to Wallace Montgomery in the amount not to exceed $310,655.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I've got a follow-up question before we leave. The, the bridge on, at Woodbine Road at the Howard County, Carroll County line, which I guess is our responsibility. I'm not really sure how that, how that happened. Are we going to see any movement on that this year?
It is in our plan, but it has not come, it's out in a couple of years.
Okay.
For, for us to start design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, approval to purchase stamped concrete, also Department of Public Works.
Good morning, everybody.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Building and Construction requests your approval to purchase stamped concrete installation at the Farm Museum to HTI Contractors in the amount of $84,950. HTI Contractors is a current term contractor with Carroll County. The purchase is within the FY25 approved budget.
All right. Good morning. So, this is all part of the pavilion that's happening at the Farm Museum. The concrete will occur after the pavilion is installed, so it's about 4,000 square feet of stamped concrete. We've been coordinating with the Farm Museum, and as noted, it is within the project budget.
For, when you do something like this with a term contractor, are a couple of them asked, or it depends on the size and the specialty?
It's still, procurement still requires two contracts now. Even if it's a term, I still have to get two.
And the other price that we got was 1.1% more. So, they were right within line with each other.
Yeah, good.
Yes.
Being stamped concrete is large, I mean, is there like a design that's going to be a part of this stamped concrete? Is it going to be?
It's a cobblestone, just resemble cobblestone.
Okay.
It'll be a darkish brown, gray. Still to be approved by the, our color selection's kind of light, but there are some variations, and we still haven't selected the final color yet.
But the Farm Museum leadership or board will be a part of
Absolutely.
The selection of design and color scheme and all that kind of fun stuff.
Absolutely.
I move the board to Commissioners to approve the purchase of stamped concrete installation to HTI Contractors in the amount of $84,950.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have Economic Development approval to purchase counseling services from Small Business Development Center.
Hello Denise, how are you?
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Carroll County Department of Economic Development requests your approval to purchase counseling services from the Small Business Development Center in the total amount of $75,000. This amount covers the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. This is a sole source purchase. The Maryland Small Business Development Center offers small business counsel, consulting services in every Maryland jurisdiction. Carroll County is part of the northern region. MD SBDC is part of the U.S. Small Business Administration, and it is established for this very purpose, to provide free counseling and training to entrepreneurs and expanding businesses. SBDC will provide Carroll County Office of Economic Development monthly reports of outcomes, SBDC training and counseling outcomes. Funding has been approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
Hi, Denise Beaver, Director of Economic Development. As you're aware, we have worked with the northern region of the Maryland Small Business Development Center for years to provide free, no-cost counseling as well as training for small businesses. And so, they do lots of different activities. You can see on the screen, this is a report from 2024 with regard to the activities that they did last year. And we have a meeting with them this afternoon, actually, to talk about, you know, ongoing efforts to showcase and promote small business counseling. And I did just get, actually, just this morning, just before I came up, a testimonial that we're going to use in one of the brochures to highlight small business services. And it's from the Otzi Mediterranean Market and Eatery in Eldersburg. And we actually had visited them a couple of months ago with the northern region and the Maryland SBA region director to see their market and their eatery. And it's a really great new little place. So, here's a quote from them. "Navigating starting a new restaurant after the pandemic was daunting. With the help of SBDC, we found banks to apply to state and state grants which we qualified for. It was a lot easier than doing it on our own. SBDC is an indispensable resource for anyone to have in their pocket when making the huge leap to entrepreneurship." So, that's a great testimonial, and we do feel that, obviously, it's a great partnership that we have with them, and we encourage anyone who's interested in starting a business or expanding their small business to contact us. And we will put them in touch with Darren Payton, who's the regional director, assistant director, and a very qualified counselor. So, we appreciate your support with this contract.
Why are we paying for a federal service with the SBA? Do we always pay?
Yes, yes. This is, it's something that they can, local jurisdictions provide money, and then they can draw down other money and match from the SBA.
Is there a match associated with this?
Yes. They, Amy Wallace, who's the regional director, says that it's usually typically about a one-to-one match. So, for us investing in 75, we can pull down about 75 that comes out of the Maryland office.
I mean, I'd like to see that. There's a couple of things. One is, we're approving something that started four months ago. You know, we're funding from 1 January 2025 to...
Yes, they just changed their calendar of the year. They used to have a go fiscal year like ours, and then they switched it up, and now they're doing the calendar year. So, this has been budgeted in Economic Development's budget.
I understand, but I mean, the federal fiscal year is 1 October.
Right.
So, why they're not going with federal fiscal year, which I imagine that's what the SBA does, and they're going to calendar year?
Right.
That's, I'm not sure how they're matching the SBA to what we're funding. It's still not very clear. I mean, I understand you said Amy's saying, you know, possibly doing this. I'd like to see that.
Sure. I can ask for that today.
But then, it's also, you know, a concern, we don't know what the federal government's going to do with the SBA. And we don't know the federal government's intent in maintaining the SBA's manpower, focus. I mean, they've adjusted, as we know, to date, a lot over the last couple of months.
Sure. Yeah, that's anybody's guess. We did see something recently that said that the focus was going to be maintaining some of the positions like, you know, we have here, small business counseling, focus on Main Streets, focus on the small business. So, that was one of the indications we got, but as you said, it's anybody's guess as to what's going to happen.
There's indications. I'd like, it'd be nice to get confirmation before we start spending money. Because again, and you know, I 100% agree with SBDC and the SBA and the process, 100%, and have for a long, long time, in its value. My concern is that we just don't know what tomorrow's going to bring with the SBA, you know, with the federal government. And we don't know why, well, right now, why they changed from fiscal year in July to calendar year and not federal fiscal year. I mean, I'm not clear on that.
And, and how is it paid? Is this a lump sum payment? Is it a monthly payment? You know, how, how, and when do you pay?
This is a lump sum payment, yeah. So, we get an invoice. It's budgeted every year. We get an invoice, and then we, we pay it.
And the payment soon, you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Soon as you approve it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, are you comfortable with a motion and asking for more information, or?
Well, why don't we get some of those answers and then just bring this back next week for a decision? I mean, and I'll never say, well, it's only 75,000, because that's, you know, our taxpayer. That's, our job is to ensure every penny. And again, and you know how much of an advocate I am of the SBA and the SBDC. I'm just concerned on what next week will bring, you know, with the SBA.
And, and I'm not sure they'll be able to answer that question.
I know.
But we can, we can certainly ask and maybe reach out to the SBA nor, you know, the regional director and find out what they're hearing. I haven't received any direct information about any of those proposed impacts.
Right.
So, yeah.
You know, those are my thoughts. I mean, I'm, I'm fine if everybody wants to go along and move forward with this.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask next.
I mean, I understand your concerns. I mean, believe me, I think everybody's looking at the federal side of things at this point. I mean, what would be the, I guess my question would be, it's a match. If we were to approve this, and let's say something were to fall by the wayside on the federal level, where would that put us?
I guess what would be 75,000 committed to the program, but we wouldn't get the match, but we'd still have 75,000 in? I mean, I certainly, actually, I, you know, I certainly take what Commissioner Rothstein has raised, because I had some of the same questions myself, and he covered them. I, I certainly don't have a problem with waiting another week to try to find a little bit more information.
Yeah, the $75,000 primarily goes to fund the counselor that we have. Darren Payton is the Assistant Regional Director. He has office hours in our office. He's available to meet with small business clients in our office, as well as in the community, wherever they need to meet. So, that's where the funding goes to, provide that. I guess from my perspective, we need to have small business services that are connected to economic development. So, we're going to try to convince you to fund that in one way or another. So... So, you know, I strongly believe in the SBA and SBDC. I think the value, that is why the SBA was established, was to provide these types of counseling and services and training to small businesses all throughout the country. So as you know, we're primarily made up of small business. That is the, the growth engine of, you know, the economies across the state and across the nation. And I think that one-on-one counseling is critical to those small business owners. They, it's, anybody who has a small business knows, it's really difficult to navigate what to do, when to do it, how to do it, and all of that. And when you have a counselor that can walk you through that, I think, as the gentleman who's the owner of Otzi said, makes it much easier. They don't, they don't know what to do, or where to turn, or who to ask, and if you can have a trusted advisor, you know, that has those answers, I think, makes it a lot easier, makes them more successful.
I agree with you. Everything you said, I agree. And this is in no way a concern to give Darren a pink slip, you know? This is to
Sure.
look at federal funding that we're just very uncertain about. And, I mean, I just don't know. I'm, I'm just not confident that the SBA has a path forward. And if they do, that's great. I think we just need to kind of make sure before we invest in it. I'll invest in Darren, you know? If that's, that's a different question, you know? And Darren and Amy and that team, I'll invest in them because of the value they bring to Carroll County.
Right. And that's what this funding goes to do?
Oh, I know, but, but it's going through the SBA, and it's hard to invest in, you know, federal government when federal government is changing and shifting funding to the states in so many different ways.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know with the Maryland SBDC, like
Yeah.
what their bank account looks like, you know, in terms of the funding that they've gotten to date. But I can certainly ask them this afternoon and see if we can get some more clarity on that.
Well, will a week delay do a negative impact to this? Or you're okay with this? So I think the majority want the questions answered, so.
As long as you say yes next week.
Thank you for your patience with this, Denise.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public comment, do we have any callers?
Yes, we have a caller on the line. Caller, if you could use star six to unmute, please identify yourself, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Greetings, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Catherine Adelaide, a member of the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. Thank you again for your service to the community and for this opportunity through technology to address you. Big news for our Carroll County Republican Central Committee. At our last meeting, we could go from today, I was off at the March for Life, more about that later, but we did have our election of officers. So our new Chair of the Central Committee is Mercedes Nobis. Our ongoing Vice Chair is Sam Jones. Karen Leatherwood is continuing as our Secretary. And our new Treasurer is Joe Lehman. He had a big work increase and had announced last month that he wasn't gonna be able to chair anymore, but we're extremely grateful that he's gonna be our new Treasurer. I do want to thank Joe for all of his service to the committee over the years. He's been very faithful, so we're very happy that he's our new Treasurer. Thank you all who stepped up to serve the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. And our next meeting will be April 24th at 6:30 at the, at the, I'm sorry, at the Westminster Senior Center. Okay, on more Republican news, our MDGOP convention, Spring Convention, will be May 2nd and May 3rd, 2025, at the Hyatt Regency in Chesapeake Bay in Cambridge, Maryland. Early bird pricing for tickets is April 29th at 5:00 PM, so this is your invitation. I'll probably remind you again. We'd love to see you all take a nice little vacation down to Eastern Shore. Sponsorships are available.
You still there? I think we lost her.
I didn't touch anything.
She can call back in.
Is it this?
Any of us coming through the microphones? Can you hear any of us?
Is it still on there? Speakers are right.
Chris?
Chris, do you still have the caller?
She's still talking, it sounds like.
Yeah, I can hear her.
Chris, can you hear us?
We can't hear any, maybe we can't hear anyone.
Yeah.
Oh, you think the speakers in here died?
Check. No, I can still hear them.
Says Chris is talking, but we cannot hear him.
He's talking right now.
We could all go into his room and listen.
Chris, I don't have you in here.
Catherine, if you can hear us, you blew up our sound system.
So. She's still talking.
Are we safe to continue? We're still?
Let's make sure that we're, can you tell that we're still on the air?
Oh, yeah, I can tell, yeah, we're still on the air.
So we're still open?
Yes, sir.
Don't be recorded when we're still on the air.
Okay, and like you said, she can call back in. Admin open, anybody got any comments or any things for admin open?
Yes, sir.
Wanda, can we do the agenda? Agenda I, I guess, is two of them, right?
Good morning.
Good morning. Wanda, how are you today?
Good, thank you.
Okay. 10:00 AM and maybe all day, Mako Sunny-Die Celebration in Annapolis, Commissioner Kyler and Rothstein on Monday. There's a solar hearing evidentially. Cape Horn, Cape Horn Project in Westminster, Commissioner Kyler. And I need to verify if that is, I think that's virtual, but I need to verify that. On Tuesday, April 8th, 9:00 AM, Board of County Commissioners close admin. 7:00 PM, 4-H Achievement Program at the Ag Center in Westminster, Commissioner Rothstein. 7:00 PM, there is a solar hearing in Sykesville. And I may or may not try to get to, back to the Ag Center, depending on how long it lasts. On Wednesday at 9:30, Farm Museum
I'm sorry, Commissioners, if you're interested in speaking, let them know at the Public Service Commission, they'd like you to sign up in advance. There is also a virtual option, in case you would like to use that as well, but you have to go on their website in advance.
You're talking for April 8th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll certainly be there, but understand you've got two things you're trying to
Yeah, and I thought we did this one, but I'll, I'll check when we're done here. Yeah. Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti, Board of Ed Meeting, right now no Commissioners attending. On Thursday, April 10th, closed admin, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, open session. Priority Carroll has Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, Proclamation, Legislative Update. Item Three, Spending Authority, Prime Care Medical, Inc. Item Four, Approval to Purchase, Courshouse Security. Item Five, Housing Solutions Program. Item Six, Community Partnership Agreement. Item Seven, Asphalt Plant Update. Item Eight, Mowing for Stormwater Management Facility. Item Nine, Mowing for Storm Management Facility. And Item Ten's Another Stormwater Management Facility. Public Comment, Agenda Review, Admin Open. Then we're closed for land acquisition at 1:00 PM. Open Session, Proposed Budget Work Session. 5:00 PM, United Way of Central Maryland at Flood Zone, Commissioners Kyler and Rothstein. 6:00 PM, Battles of the Books on Friday, the next day. At Winter's Mill, Commissioner Kyler, Battles of Books, South Carroll High School shows no one. Saturday and Sunday, no activities, and Commissioner Gordon has the podcast. For the next week, Monday, April 14th, show's open. Tuesday, 9:00 AM, Open Session, Budget Work Session. Planning Zoning Commissions also meeting at that same time at 2:00 PM is the Veterans' Advisory Meeting, Commissioners Gordon and Kyler. On Wednesday, Carroll Community College Board of Trustees at 5:00 PM, Commissioner Kyler. 7:00 PM, ESAC Commissioner Guerin. On Thursday, 8:00 AM, Closed Admin, 9:00 AM, Open Session. Priority Carroll will include Scouts of America. And a Presentation of Youth Art Contest Awards and Fair Housing Month Proclamation. Public Comment, Agenda Review, Open Session. And April 18th is Good Friday, and Commissioner Guerin has the podcast. Any changes or updates? Are there any public comment back on the phone? We still can't hear them. If, if they are, we can't hear them, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.